All right, this meeting of the Denton Township Board of Education is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice this meeting was provided through Daily Record and/or the Star Letter of Morris County. It has been delivered to the township clerk and posted to the Bolton Board as the Board of Ed's office and at each of the school buildings in the districts. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Capello?
Here.
Mrs. Lindsay? Mr. Cass?
Here.
Mr. Duarte? Mrs. De Luna?
Here.
Mr. Napawalney?
Here.
All right, Mariana should be in a few minutes and I know Carlos said he's gonna be a few minutes late as well. We'll skip the pledge until we get into public session. In the meantime, Dino, you wanna move us into executive?
Absolutely. At this time, I would move to convene an executive session in accordance with Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act. The purpose of this closed session will be to discuss negotiations, legal and personnel issues. Minutes of this session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Do a second for that?
Second.
A second for Mike. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Opposed? May? Any objections? All right, 7:01, we are in executive session. All right, thank you all for coming. We are officially starting the public portion of our meeting. We skipped the pledge of allegiance during the private session, so we'll be doing it in front of all of you to prove that we know how to do it still. But since we have kids here, I'd like all of you to stand up, come up to the table, you can face the parents. We're gonna say the pledge. You guys are gonna lead us. You in the jacket, you gotta even start us. Right there.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God invisible with their feet in the just the world.
All right, so thank you all for coming. You know, I decided before tonight's meeting that every meeting going forward is going to be talking about buses, so we can get more and more people out to our meetings. Do you want to open my mouth? We've got a couple of different presentations to go through tonight. First, we have a presentation to Mr. Einhorn, right?
Yes.
Want to read us through that?
Sure. Well, as you know, our law firm, Einhorn Harris, has been presenting for the last six -- this'll be the eighth year.
We have a podium here. It'll be on Karen.
My name is Ted Einhorn. I'm a partner of the law firm of Einhorn Harris here in town. This is the sixth year that we have presented a check to the Board of Education for the Mock Trial Project, which has been operating here for at least a near five years. This'll be the sixth year under new stewardship. I apologize to her for mispronouncing her name. I know I'm good at doing -- Miss Langus? Is my -- Mrs.?
Mrs. Lysick.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, I had good intentions. And I'm glad to see we have so many people here who listen to the Mock Trial Project. My wife asked me where I was going tonight. I said I was going home to the Denton Board of Ed. They're gonna have a presentation for the youngsters who were involved in the 7th and 8th grade in the Mock Trial Project. She said, "Well, you've been doing that for the last five years. Are you ever gonna get a promotion?" And I said, "Well, the only thing I'm really concerned about is to make sure that the young people who are involved in that get promoted." It's our -- it's been our pleasure to make this contribution every year. Tim Ford, who is one of our associates, has been monitoring and helping out the youngsters with that, and we're just very happy that we can continue to do this, and we hope that we'll be able to do it well into the future. And normally, when I give a check to somebody, I say, "Wait a couple of days." So it's our pleasure to get this check and hopefully, you know, I know it'll be in good order and we'll be back next year. Thank you.
He's gonna start recruiting some of these lawyers and training them in the next couple of years.
Well, we have enough lawyers in Denton. We have to be a little careful about competition. But no, we look forward and hopefully, I'll be here when one day I'll be facing some of these young people here as an adversary or maybe as a member of our firm. You never can tell, but we look forward to that day. Thank you.
The purpose is for, you know, the students to be able to give a little bit of explanation about the Mock Trial Program and our wonderful faculty advisor. This is my sixth year volunteering. I enjoy spending the time. My wife is a public school teacher, so it's an opportunity for me to be on the other side and to experience what she experiences, and I get a lot out of it, and I hope that the students get a lot out of it. The Board of Education, the parents are fortunate that the faculty at Valley View is stellar. I was fortunate to work with Mr. Hoffman for five years, who did a wonderful job with the program. And Valley View and the parents and students are very lucky to have Ms. Lyskis. This year, we think it's gonna be a wonderful program and give an opportunity for the students to explain a little bit more about it. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Ish Patel, and these are a few members of Mock Trial.
My name is Leila Lyra. This is my second year in Mock Trial. We're participating in an important private-public partnership through the generosity of the law firm Einhorn Harris, Asher, Barbara, and you, thank you.
Hello, my name is Wayna Shaw. This is the second year of Mock Trial for me. We are learning about the legal system and how it works not only here in New Jersey but in the United States.
My name is Tay Shaw. This is my second year in Mock Trial, and we're learning about the legal system and how it works not only here in New Jersey but in the United States.
Hi, my name is Kokila Sharda, and this is my second year in Mock Trial. We are increasing our skills in listening, public speaking, reading, and critical thinking. We are working hard to increase our skills in cooperation.
Hi, my name is Sky Apple. This is my first year in Mock Trial, and Mrs. Lyskis has always said that research is all about reading. We know for sure that this is true.
Hi, my name is Rowan Yadisa. This is my second year in Mock Trial, and we are preparing for an academic competition with Coach Ford and Coach Lyskis, and when we enter the courtroom, it will be like our playing field.
My name is Ashling Garcia, and this is my second year in Mock Trial. Mock Trial at the middle school level is called Law Adventure. New Jersey is one of only 13 states that provides experience. However, high school Mock Trial is held in every state and for college, there's a national competition. In 2015, Harvard beat Yale in a battle decision.
Hi, my name is Kimaya, and this is my second year in Mock Trial. This year's competition is based on the Bill of Rights of the U.S. Constitution. As 7th graders, we conduct research on constitutional law as it relates to landmark causes of the U.S. Supreme Court. We got this.
As you can see, these youngsters are well on their way to being very able advocates, so we look forward to working with them in the future. Thank you. Nice job, girls.
And boys.
And thank you to attorneys here, and they do help out with the kids during the year. It's a really nice, great thing that they do for the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you guys file documents? I don't know where we can get enough. Stand by. Let me get out of the way.
Okay. Very nice.
Okay, now if you'll look over here. Somebody said yes, so. Okay, and that, thank you.
All right, so the next portion is gonna be a presentation by you guys from Lakeview, I guess, right? Mrs. Basely, I think is gonna help introduce Mr. Kep.
showcase about Lakeview School because we all know Lakeview School is amazing and we do so many wonderful things. Last year, we showcased our One Book One School. And so we racked our brains, what really makes a statement about Lakeview School and who we are as a school, what we try to teach our children, and what our children demonstrate every day, every year. So we recently had our Veterans Day program. And as I stood in front of the veterans and I said, "This is our 22nd Veterans Day program."
I thought that spoke a lot to a school that believed in patriotism, recognizing our American heroes, and teaching something to our children, something that we valued enough that for 22 years, we've held it in high esteem. For the last 12 years, Mr. Komorowski has been handling our Veterans Day program. So I'm gonna turn this program now over to Mr. Komorowski and our wonderful Lakeview students, who'll give you a little taste of Veterans Day at Lakeview School.
So as Mrs. Basely mentioned, it was our 22nd annual Veterans Day ceremony this year and my 12th. And a personal note, it's one of my favorite events that we do. One of the messages that we try to communicate to the students is, you know, we have plays, we have concerts, parents come out, they're there to see how awesome they are, and they are awesome. They are awesome. But this is the one event where we invite veterans, special guests. They're not there to see how awesome you are, instead, they're there to receive your thank you and receive your appreciation. And I think that's the message that we instill in our students at Lakeview School. We're very proud to instill that message. So I've asked five students to join us, and they're going to speak a little bit to you just about what Veterans Day is to them, and then we prepared just a short video that just shows different pictures of what goes on at Lakeview School every year. So I'm going to invite up Meredith Hollister, Anna Gomez, Elena Bolpe, Callan Murphy, and Joseph Burke.
We asked the veterans what Veterans Day meant to them. In the veteran's perspective, Veterans Day is a day of remembrance, and it brings back memories from when they were in war. I learned from the veterans that veterans who fought in wars and put on a uniform are very important. I also learned that we give thanks to them for serving our country.
As they walk into our school, I think of them as that, as once, as they gave their, as they shed their last tear and their last moment of sorrow.
At the Veterans Day program at Lakeview School, it's really about thanking the veterans and what they did to preserve our freedom.
So, as you can hear, we give, we provide our students with a great message about what Veterans Day is about. So for those who haven't attended, each class in the 4th and 5th grade are responsible for speaking either a poem or reciting the meaning of a different aspect of patriotism on stage. So Anna Gomez was charged with reciting the poem "In Flanders' Fields," and she's going to share that with us now.
In Flanders' Fields, the poppies blow between the crosses row on row. That mark our place, and in the sky, the larks still bravely singing fly scarce heard amid the guns below. We are the dead, short days ago. We lived, felt dawn, saw sunset glow, loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flanders' Fields. Take up our quarrel with the foe. To you from failing hands we throw. The torch be yours to hold it high, if ye break faith with us who die. We shall not sleep, though poppies grow in Flanders' Fields.
The last thing we'll do is we'll run the video clip of the different stills. The girls, they interviewed a few veterans just to ask them what Veterans Day meant to them, so we have those video clips also included, and we would just like to share that with you.
You have to click. Yes, click that. Right there. here, 'cause the flag still stands for freedom and they can't deny. Veterans Day means that we are celebrating all the veterans that are alive, whether they're male or female, as long as they wore the uniform, they become a veteran. The other holiday that we honor is Memorial Day, that is for the deceased veterans of this country. Next to you, and if they're still today, 'cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. From the lakes of Minnesota to the hills of. Veterans Day means to me, a lot of memories of 30 years in the Army, traveling all over the world, visiting all 50 states, visiting 20 states. I can't remember. It's time we stand and say. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me. Today is a day that we honor all veterans. It started at the end of World War I with Army's Day. No doubt I love this land. God bless the U.S.A. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me. And I'm glad we stand up. Next to you, and if they're still today, 'cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless the U.S.A.
Again, I would just like to thank you for allowing us to present our program here tonight. As I mentioned, it is, it's an honor for us at Lakeview School, for the kids. You can see their pride in their faces. When I prep my 4th graders, one of the things I tell them is, you know, "I can't describe the feeling that you're going to leave with." I wish I could, but I can't. You'll just know what I'm talking about after the day is over, and they all come back to me and say that they do. So, thank you again.
Can we put a picture of you up there with your parents?
Sure.
Fantastic parents picture on the tree. Or anybody else. All right. You can stand up and take a picture. All right, so we have, I just assumed you were all here for the trial presentation now. Yeah. All right, so we have one more quick thing to go over, may or may not be quick, in regards to some news in the papers and what I guess our last meeting and really what we've been talking about immediately or in committee meetings for the last six months or a year or so, which is the possible change in busing tiers, meaning not three different routes for three different schools, but two, so two-tier busing. Just to put a couple things, or just put it out there, I know Facebook is usually the authority on most information, but no decision has been made. As a matter of fact, we're now talking about it publicly, purposefully, so it's out there and transparent, and people can voice their opinions pro or against or learn as much information as possible. There's no detail on bus stops, there's no detail on times, there's no detail on anything like that. So if you've heard any of it, I promise you it's wrong. Tonight, we're starting to talk about it. You're gonna hear a little bit of a presentation from Sandy, who's gonna go through some detail in regards to what the genesis of this possibility is, which is, at the end of the day, hopefully, to give a better education to our kids, which is ultimately what we try to decide on. But again, this has nothing to do with anything that's been established, or I've heard from some parents who've said, "Should I even come to tonight's meeting? Is a decision already made?" It's not. It won't be made tonight, by the way, either. There's a lot of logistics, there's a lot of considerations, there's a lot of different elements that need to be considered. So, we're gonna start off with Sandy, she's gonna do a little bit of a presentation. We'll open up to public comments after this, and we'll keep it specific to the bus route or to the potential plan, and then we'll go through some comments later and go through another section of public comments. Do you have a kiss? Yeah, he don't have a kiss.
Thank you for coming. We have you all here.
Thank you for coming.
The public club next Wednesday is our next pass, a parent category meeting, and the topic is on interpreting the part reports. So if you want to come and learn how to interpret those school reports that will be coming out in the next few weeks, please come. That's next Wednesday night at Riverview School, 6:30.
There's some room up there in the front, if anybody'd like to move up from the back there. Plenty of room up front. Tierney, Juipin, you guys, I know some of you. Room up here.
First, I want to just preface this, and really, the discussion of the busing is kind of a byproduct of what the real educational discussion is. And you may have been seeing in the news, and recently, the report came out from the American Academy of Pediatrics as well as the CDC, the Center of Disease Control, about delaying the start times for both middle schools and high schools. You probably have also heard that our president has made comments, many government officials. But really, this issue has started out about 20 years ago with research, but a lot of the research that has been done in the last few decades has really come out recently in reports by many of our medical journals and, like I said, major organizations about the benefits of delaying our start time. So tonight, I just want to present some of the benefits of delaying our start times. Right now, we currently start around 7:30 in the middle school, and we have one school that starts at 8:00 in the elementary school and one that starts at 8:30 about. So this just gives you an idea. So the recommendation after this research that came out is saying that adolescents, so our middle schoolers and our high schoolers, should really be attaining eight and a half to nine and a half hours of sleep per night, and that really, the middle school and high school should start at 8:30, because at this point, once the students hit puberty, we see a change in their biological clock, their circadian clock, that changes from no longer being able to fall asleep even at 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock at night. So it's not quite as easy as saying, "Please put your 8th grader to bed at 8 o'clock." Those of you that have 8th graders and high schoolers know how effective that is to try to get them to sleep really early, but it's truly a biological change, that their body clocks do change after puberty and start to stay up later and then still, but still need the nine and a, eight and a half to nine and a half hours of sleep, which means getting up early, staying up later, and also getting up earlier is crunching their time to about five to six hours of sleep a night. This presentation will be available on the website, and all of my research is, the links are on there, so you can click on, and there's truly, you know, maybe 50 articles on there that you can read, the different aspects and what journals they're coming from. The health benefits. They have found that there is a decreased risk of obesity, that the students that received eight and a half to nine and a half hours of sleep per night had a lower risk of obesity because of their habits of eating, that they actually, with a healthy night of sleep, actually eat better. But what, if you have five to six hours of sleep a night, you tend to go to unhealthier foods, and there was a higher rate for those students with obesity. A decreased risk of injury, so students, again, that are having the deprivation of sleep for long periods of time, because this builds up over years, that they had a higher risk of injury in sports, as well as even higher automobile accidents and so forth as they got into the driving age. A positive byproduct is a higher academic achievement, that students that were, went to schools that had later start times and had more sleep were actually doing better academically. And they tested all of these things in schools where one school would start at, you know, one time, and then one school would start at 8:30, and then they would just measure those students in similar communities. So all of the research that you'll see here is, you know, they've done it with, that particular almost like 60,000 students in large districts across the country, measuring schools that started at different times and how the students did. And one that I found particularly interesting was that the students that had a better habit of sleep were able to regulate their, both their mood, their behavior, as well as their emotions. And what they saw in the studies was that students with severe sleep deprivation, we're talking about that every night getting six hours of sleep, night after night, year after year, that they have a difficult time regulating their executive functioning. And so what we were seeing with those, what they're seeing with those students is that they are mimicking behaviors of students that have ADHD. So even if they did not have attention deficit, the behaviors that they had were exactly mimicking those students that would have diagnosed ADHD. So the lack of attentiveness, difficulty with executive functioning, which is organization, difficulty being able to do long-term recall, overall word processing. It was quite amazing that students, when those behaviors came out, the students were not diagnosed with ADHD, but still had those behaviors when they had extreme sleep deprivation. So the academic benefits, of course, that goes along with the health. Of course, that goes along with the health as well, but higher academic achievement. Schools, if we were to look at what times we had our schools starting, the operating time would be our pre-adolescent students or pre-decayed students, their circadian clocks actual function earlier. So, they do better. And anyone who has the younger children know that they actually perform much better in the morning than they do in the afternoon. That they, their best learning time is, their optimal learning time is between 8:00 and noon each day. And that as the afternoon wears on, they actually become sleepier and have less productive time in the afternoons. The adolescents, it's the opposite. In the morning was their least productive time. And in the afternoon, starting around 10:00 to the afternoon, was their most productive time. And they tie this by doing all sorts of assessments as well. Looking at students who took the test at 8:00 in the morning versus students who took it at 10:00 in the morning and then in the afternoon. To see where was their optimal performance time. And they're, they noticed that middle school and high school students were better in the late morning to afternoon. Another benefit for our district of getting the schools on the same time is just having both elementary schools at the same, on the same schedule. This provides for us professional development opportunities between the two schools that we do not currently have. Because we have a half an hour between each time plus travel time. It makes it difficult for us to coordinate both schools together. We also could be looking at additional after-school enrichments that we currently cannot offer or we have to offer them twice. You know, once at both schools, the same program. This can impact our community activities. Because we know that some of our organizations have activities after school, but they have to wait for one school to be released. One school is able to attend, but then they have to wait the additional, you know, 45 minutes for the other school to be able to attend. So, although Mr. Napoloni said that we aren't really talking about times, I'm just giving you suggestions. What we're looking at is, like I said, currently we have three times. We have about a 7:30 start, an 8:00 start and an 8:30 start. Here's two possible options. First of all, we have an option not to do any of these. But after all of this research, I felt compelled that we should at least investigate what we're doing and are we providing the most optimal situation for our students? If we know that the research tells us that sleep deprivation, that's what it is. Sleep deprivation over long periods of time is not helpful to our students. Is there a different way to do it? And as you can see, many, in the news almost every day, that school districts are moving to later start times. Large districts, I know in Virginia just had Fairfax, which has 200 schools. And tried to coordinate 200 schools on a different time schedule, but they were able to move their time schedule back. Some of our local middle schools also have 8:30 start times. So, this is not something that's totally strange for middle schools and high school. It's just, it really hasn't been done here, at least for a while. Option A would be the elementary school starting first. So, they would run pretty much on the same schedule that Lakeview does now. Okay, so they would run from 8:00 until 2:53. So, we would be getting those students in the buildings at an optimal learning time, but also getting them out before it's late in the afternoon and that they could be getting home, you know, especially when it starts to get darker in the evening, their home and their home for their homework and then can go to do their activities. And they're still going to bed at 8:00. You know, we're talking about our kindergartners who are fifth graders. They're still going to bed between 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock and maybe even earlier. Our middle schoolers would then, in option A, go start at 8:30 until 3:23. Again, for the same thing. They would get, they would get additional sleep in the morning. They would be out at 3:23 and then they would be doing their activities and their homework because they tend to stand later. Option B would be to move the middle school to be the earlier time. Although this does not reap the same benefits as option A, it can be done. Middle school would start from 8:00 to 2:53. And then both elementary schools would be 8:30 to 3:23. So, here are a few questions that have come up in our discussions. And you probably can't read this, but again, this presentation will be up on the website. One of the questions that came to me was, "If the high school has an earlier start time, will it hurt our students to have a later start time and then have to move to earlier? Because that's the middle, the high schools, you know, 7:30 or after." I did research on this. I spoke with several organizations. And the fact is that sleep deprivation is not a skill that you learn how to adjust to. They've done research on pilots, on long-term truck drivers, doctors, all sorts of different fields, as well as in education, that you don't learn to be a better, or to be productive with less sleep. It isn't a skill you can master and you can just become good at that. So, really, if we have, we only have our students, our middle school, for three years. So, my position would be that for those three years, we are helping to develop healthy sleep habits for them. And the benefits, there is also research on there that I've listed that shows that the sleep habits that they develop in these first adolescent years do carry over. They do, you know, it's not something that will hurt them by getting to high school. And even if the high school is still later, it wouldn't make it...
Earlier.
I mean, I'm sorry. If the high school is not, that's what I'm saying. If the high school is not, we're later, if they're, we're later and they're earlier. It's not going to hurt them for three years, learning healthy sleep habits of getting up later and being productive for those three years. Because it's not a skill that you master. So, when they go to the high school and it's earlier, they will have to get up earlier. But it's not like we train them for three years. That's my point. Is there a question with that?
Well, it doesn't make sense. Middle schools get our kids ready to go to high school.
We don't, we train them for skill-wise, but what I'm telling you is, sleep is not a skill that you learn. Lack of sleep is not a skill that you learn to do. The question came up about values, sports and after-school activities. There are, some of the districts in our own league do get out at 3:30. So, this is not a situation that would be new to us. Other school districts in our sports league that get out at that time and we do adjust. We would have to adjust. Our sport time, we would have to be between about 4:15 to 4:45 for our games instead of 3:45. That may be challenging for some, but it also might be a benefit that maybe more parents would be able to get to the game if the game started at 4:45 instead of, or 3:45. Our practice would still end about 5:00. And without having, if the middle school was the second run, we would not have the pressure of quickly getting to an elementary run. So, we could run sports buses after school and we could run a late bus for activities. So, we have some more options with our after-school programs. And also, I would say that this is going, I think, going to become a natural consequence for many schools. Because I know that, for one, Denville is not the only school that's considering this. It is becoming a statewide initiative and a lot of schools are looking at how they would do this. And it just happens that right now in Denville, this is a time that we can consider it because we're looking at efficiencies of our busing as well. Remember that the topic of this is the benefits for our students if we were to delay the start times. What would the benefits be? And like I said, no decision has been made and there's many options to do this.
It's great that so many people came out. Because we really wanted to have this dialogue and get a chance to get out there and tell everybody. Because I have been speaking about this, believe it or not, since October of last year. But because the double-decker bus rumors got out there, we ran against people. So, we're definitely not raising the bridges or any of that stuff. Not about that. So, there will be challenges, obviously. But I want to go through a couple of things now. And not everybody, like people who live on my side of town, might not know this. We have kids on the bus at 6:30 in the morning for the middle school. We have kids on the bus at 45 minutes right now. Those are two things, you know, we, Sandy and I talked about the amount of wasted time that is where we can try to impact them in some way instead they're on a bus for 45 minutes. Maybe there's a way to fix it. Maybe there's not. You know, but it's, it's an opportunity for a dialogue. So, you know, the 6:30 start, that was something that jumped out at me. So, we would have to run more efficiently to do this. We're not getting into the details now because we're really deciding on whether or not this is an avenue we want to pursue academically. The logistical part, we'll get, we'll get to that. But we would have to reduce some bus stops. Now, I would, I would explain one other thing to you. My plan is if we're going down this road and we're gonna start really planning this, we will, I will personally, with Dr. Colas and whoever else I need, we'll go on a town-wide tour. And we'll do convenient times for everybody. I'll do a daytime one. We'll do a Saturday meeting. We'll do, we'll do a night meeting. We'll come around. We'll give you an opportunity to talk and ask us questions. And we will actually bring a map of Denville. We have large maps of Denville. We got through the town. We blew them up to being literally as big as this. And I'll have, and I'll have a dot at every single spot where the stops will be. So, you could actually go up there and look. Like, there will have to be some reduction in bus stops. And I know there were some this year. It won't be as drastic as you might think. It won't be like 150 stops to 60 stops. But it probably will cut a few stops down again. One of the reasons is, and I, and parents have asked me, and it's strange because a lot of you are people that know me, they're from sports and playing around and ask me questions, "How can you put that bus stop back?" And I get it. Trust me. I understand it. Makes, makes a lot of sense. Can you put this bus stop back? And one, what is one bus stop gonna do? You know, it's true, it doesn't do a lot. But if you cut 100 bus stops and each one of them takes 30 seconds, that's, that's a pretty big, pretty big reduction where you can actually do some of these things. We, I feel a responsibility to try to do something about that 6:30 start for kids. I really do. So, that's why we're, we're investigating this stuff right now. But the last bullet that we said, "We will not eliminate the safety stops." Like, I know, and I know some of them are annoying. People get stuck behind the bus going on Franklin. You know, like it stops at every, every single house or every corner. But it has to, because there's nowhere for the kids to walk. Same thing with Route 46. We're not gonna stop at one spot on Route 46 and let kids walk to, walk on Route 46. So, we still have to keep this. There are other safety locations too. I'm just throwing out a couple of easy ones, right? Like Diamond Spring too. We can't have kids walking on Diamond Spring. We will have to make those stops. And those are annoying stops when you've been stuck behind them. You know how many calls I get from people saying, "Why is the bus stop?" Everything. You have to. So, again, I will, if, after we hear from you here, and we're gonna give everybody an opportunity to say what they'd like to say now. After we hear from you, we're gonna, we're gonna talk as a team. And if this is something we're gonna pursue, I'm gonna do those, those information sessions where you can get out and actually have real details. Where you can go and look and say, "Oh, my stop is there. It used to be here. My kid has to walk an extra block." Something like that. So, we are doing all this with Denville Police too. So, every step of the way, the Denville Police Department will be on board and say, "Yeah, you know what, Steve? If you make this bus stop like that, there's gonna be 70 people parking there. It won't work." So, so we're gonna think about those things. We're also thinking about, hey, if I move the bus stop, if you live a block away from school and I move the bus stop for you one block the other way, you're probably not gonna drive a block or let your kid walk a block away from school. You're gonna have him walk or drive a block to school. That just makes sense. And we can't have that because there'd be too much, there'd be too many cars getting on the property. So, we're thinking about those kinds of things too. And again, the police have been working with us every step of the way. They've been very helpful. And now, I'm done for what I have to say. But I'm gonna move back to my seat so you can come up and ask questions if you have questions. There's a sign in sheet right here. You have to say your name and your address, ask us a question. If we can't answer it, I will get back to you. And that's, that's it for today. Thanks. Thank you.
So, you all came here to say something. So, you're welcome to start walking up. And just, I want to stress again that there are a lot of unknowns right now. And there may be points in the near future where we may say, "This doesn't make a whole lot of sense." So, it will stop. But the absolute focus... The absolute focus from a, from a board's perspective has nothing to do financially. It has nothing to do with, you know, our individual conveniences. It has a lot more to do with...
Or inconvenience.
Right. It has a lot more to do with what Sandy talked about, which is the academic success markets. Give me the data.
Hi, my name is Stacy Hogan. I live at 24 Cedar Lake East in Denville. So, when I heard about this, I kind of, last night, did some of my own research. I'm also a teacher. And I just wrote down a bunch of thoughts. I don't know if they're questions, but they're certainly thoughts that I have. Maybe they're thoughts that other people have. After listening to, first of all, thank you all. I know you're all volunteer here, so thank you. After listening to Dr. Colas, I just sat there the whole time about this parenting issue. My son's an eighth grader. He goes to bed at 8:30, 9:00 and he gets up for school. And that's what we make him do. And because we make him do it, he does it. He might not like it. He fights. Go to bed. That's the rules in my house. And he gets his however many hours of sleep. So, I feel like pushing it later is only gonna allow these kids to stay up later. Speaking as an eighth grade parent. And I really don't get the, the high school starts two hours late. I don't get that. My son just hit puberty, quite frankly. So, he's just in the throes of this and all through his high school years, he's gonna be getting up at 6:00 to go to school every morning. And the rest of his life and work and everything. And as a family, I don't want to do homework at 9:30 at night after activities because he's getting home at 4:00. It's already enough homework. And that break in between when he gets home now from middle school to activities gives us the time, him the time to get done what he needs to get done. He's wiped out when he gets home from there. That is not something that I want to do. I know that you're not getting into bus stops and I know about Franklin and Diamond Spring, but we live in Cedar Lake and I'm sure a lot of, a lot of lake communities, there are no sidewalks and they're one-lane roads. It's all dangerous and our bus stops are already crowded. And when it snows, you can't even get in there because that's where they push all the snow. So, that's just an ongoing issue anyway with eliminating bus stops. Also, that study, when it was presented to me at my school, I think they said the optimum start time for adolescents was 10:00 in the morning. 8:30 was the absolute earliest that we should do it. So, I'm not even sure we're getting the full benefit of what that study recommended. So, that's what I was presented to me. Montville, where I teach, does this. And I know it's been an ongoing issue in the middle school there for them. Those parents are begging to get their kids into school earlier in the morning because it impacts them all day, every day. So, that's another issue. My son has braces. Every six weeks, I gotta go to the dentist. The orthodontist is only, they have so many hours. I'm gonna have to pull him out of school to get him to these appointments after school. And that is, I don't know how many kids have braces in middle school. All of them look like that. Yeah, it's a big deal to get to the orthodontist, which sounds so silly. I'm there all the time. There are other ways to benefit the kids, like smaller class sizes, which has proven a fact to be very beneficial for kids if we're really talking about advancing them academically. I know there's a PD. I had a PD today, teachers from different schools. But I, my solution to that would be whoever ends early gets in their car and drives over to the school that ends later. And then, by the time they get there with that travel time, the other school will have dismissed and that would solve that problem. And, you know, my husband works in the city. So, there are a lot of people that don't work in Denville or even in this area. It is a huge impact. I don't want my sixth grader walking to a bus stop potentially. I don't know how far with no sidewalks, blind curbs in Cedar Lake, if you've ever driven through there. And nobody's home in the morning. Did he get to school? Now would I know? These are very big concerns for me. Those are my thoughts.
Thanks, Stacy.
Yes, I have my glasses on. My name is Judy Agrum. I live at One Borough's Lane. And I also do some research. When I get up here, I don't just fly blind, as many of the board members know. And I had the opportunity today to speak and call every single school in the I District. For those who don't know, we do sit in an I District. And the three schools that start at 8:30 would be Kinnalon Borough, Montville Township and Randolph Township. Just so you are all aware of that. And I would like to also say that they are a K through 12 district. They are not a K through 8 district. So, they're mandated and they can effectively make these changes, which, as Stacy said, are not absolutely going well. So, due to the fact that our kids go to Morris Knowles High School. And for all of those who don't know when that starts, that starts at 7:30 and ends at 2:23. In speaking with some people at the high school, because I made a phone call to them, they will not and will not even engage in entertaining the idea due to the fact that they follow the NJ SIAA, which is what they follow for sports. Okay? The high school-level sports need to start at regimentated times that they have to adhere to. So, with that being said, it is an issue that we're gonna put our kids in Denville at a disadvantage when they go to high school versus the Rockaway children. Okay? It is a huge impact on kids to go from being able to sleep an hour and a half later to then going back to waking up an hour and a half earlier. It really impacts a child. Okay? And I can thoroughly speak to that because I have one in middle school now and I have one in high school. So, with that being said, I have also done some research on the city and rhythms. And the study is basically based on high school. It's based on adolescence in a sense, but if all the sending districts in the high school are not gonna change simultaneously, it's not even going to work in that aspect. Now, I know... Now, I know people don't wanna hear about sports. But I am gonna bring up sports and extracurricular activities because many of you know that there are reports that are out there. And it doesn't matter if you're in high school, if you're in middle school, if you're in elementary school. Sports and extracurricular activities combine a well-rounded child. Anybody who goes to college, they don't look at just their grades. They look at what involvement they have, what they do, whether you're in the band or you play soccer, okay? So how does that impact us? Well, we say some of those schools are gonna adjust to that. And that's all fine and good. But that then puts a Y in the road for many, many children that do other sports outside of doing Valley View Middle School sports. So with that being said, if you're gonna start these games later, the children will get home later. And then we'll have to choose between doing their soccer outside of this school or doing Valley View soccer, per se. Or doing the band or doing a lesson outside of this school. Which will then deteriorate the camaraderie of joining the school together as one, as we want them to be. Because we do join both Lakeview and Riverview here, and we want them to be one. So now you're gonna give these kids this Y in the road that says either you can do an activity or a sport at Valley View, or you can continue on with your travel, or you can continue on with your band lesson. Whatever it is, whatever their, their thing is. So in studies pertaining to all of this, they're there, but there's also the aspect of the, it all working together in tangent. And these districts that we're comparing ourselves to, that we say many, it's three. And there's not, Booton Township doesn't, Florham Park doesn't. All these other districts have not done this. They may be considering it. But it's also a lot easier when you're a K to 12 district than if you're a K to 8 district. And the high school isn't going to move. So it really will put our kids at a detriment. Now, with that being said, we have the longest school day out of all of these schools, okay? Because we did add on it. And we are getting a better education for our children. And all of the people in this room have adjusted to those time changes. And yes, I believe that some of the bus stops should be consolidated. But with that being said, there needs to be safety issues that come on. Whether there's crossing guards, whether there's police officers there. These kids cannot be left unattended at a bus stop. God forbid something happens. But who's gonna pay for that? Does that go back to the police department with some of these things in consolidating some of the bus stops? Like if kids have to cross a thing, but you're saying, no, that we're gonna leave those special ones. But I would like to, again, we'll see it when the map comes out with regards to that. So with that being said, I have to tell you, and also religious education is another thing where kids have to be at TCD at a certain time. And that impacts people's religious beliefs and different things that they have to go to. And you know, these are part of children being well-rounded individuals. So I understand the benefits of having extra sleep. But I really, really feel in my heart of hearts that if it's going to be, it really needs to be option B, where at least these kids in middle school get out at a decent hour and the younger kids are out a little bit later.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ronnie. I live on 9 Fox Hill. Ronnie, from Kerewicham. I know you said the bus thing, and I agree with everyone, okay? But on Fox Hill, we have literally a bus behind a bus picking up kids, okay? We have the first bus that picks up two kids, then goes around the corner and picks up our bus stop. Why isn't that one bus picking up the eight kids at that first one? Instead of having another bus right behind it that's empty, okay? You guys can't cut down on the buses, okay? Which is not that hard, okay? Because literally, we have a bus that's empty passing eight kids just to pick up ours, okay? Now, my point.
What street is that?
On Fox Hill Road.
Is that the, what's the bus stop there, you know?
We have Meadow, right?
I can, I can look it up. I can look up the last name.
Well, hold on. Your name, what's before you, Meadow?
There's Thompson and Fox Hill.
Yeah, well, there's Meadow before us. And Meadow halves like New Street and Meadow. Kids, and there's like eight kids there. Then there's Thompson.
We probably have a stop diagonal from me that gets picked up on the bus coming the same exact direction. Picks up different diagonals, different buses.
Meadow and New Street. And it's a totally different bus right behind our bus. That's empty, okay? Now, my point of this whole thing is, I'm a single parent, okay? And I know a lot of parents in here, a lot of us work. Not just being single parents, but being two family incomes, okay? This is a commuter town for a reason, because of our train, okay? I've already had one parent ask me from Wakefield, what time does my bus stop? So she can drop her kids off at my bus stop so she can make the train to get to work in New York, okay? I'm a nurse. I've switched from working 7:00 to 7:00 to doing 8:00 in the morning. I'm gonna have a Valley View kid next year. How am I gonna do that? I can't lose another job. And that's what's gonna happen with a lot of these families. They're not gonna be able to get to work. And you have a big, single parent population in this town, okay? It's bad enough that I have a 78-year-old mother-in-law that has to get my kid on the bus sometimes and drive from Lippenny to get him on the bus. I mean, just like everybody's saying, this whole switching the time, the sleep deprivation, it is up to the parents to get our kids to bed on time. Okay, yeah. She, her kid complains. My kid, 10-years-old complains he gets to bed at night. That's not anybody's problem but ours. And obviously, our kids are doing good because all of our tests is still good. So why do we really need to change something that's been working, okay? If we just cut down on the different bus stops, you can still get all the kids to school at the same time. And maybe even Riverview. You don't need two buses on some streets that are half-empty, you know? Maybe it is just a whole bus situation. Instead of changing someone's life, literally, and their jobs. So maybe you need to look at that. Because a lot of parents cannot afford to lose their jobs. And then move out of this town, and then there's gonna be an issue. And that's probably what's gonna wind up happening. A lot more parents are gonna lose jobs. You can't tell your job, I have to start later, so.
Thank you.
You guys might wanna consider that.
Hi, I'm Stacy Kassar. I live at One Rapper Road. I did not come prepared. I don't really, I came here to get the information about like what's going on. And the one thing I thought was missing, and maybe you guys have it, is I understand that the pediatric academy recommends this. But what, like what is done, but where's our benchmark? And are we gonna look at, what do we expect this change to do? Like, are we falling behind? Do we see behavioral issues? Is there an index across the nation that we're not meeting in certain standards? And evaluating it from that point? So really, it's just a question. I don't really have a position yet, but I feel like you need that before you can change everything. Do we know?
Stacy, you wanna take us out a little? I think part of it, I can answer partially, is that from one perspective, I think we look at how our students are doing. But from another perspective, I think that we always see the improvement. And I think that, the easy answer I can give you is that this is hopefully gonna get them to that next level. If we can take away some of the obstacles like sleep or some of the other issues that we have, maybe the level of improvement would actually improve too.
But do you have a call? Like, is there any kind of like, we hope to see this? And I mean, for me, I've ever been a student. To me, I mean, just arbitrarily, this doesn't seem like it would be a problem for me, but I don't know. But I don't wanna switch anything. And if, if I don't know why you're doing it. Other than the academy says so, but is that, like where's, what sample size do they have?
Like, I'm gonna encourage, thank you. I'm gonna encourage you to look, everyone. Because I've been able to read for many, many, many hours. There's tons of studies. And the more I read, actually, Mr. Porte came with me, to me last year, looking at this issue. We started noticing, it started with the kids getting up at 6:30. And we're like, this is crazy. Anyone who has, middle schoolers, high schoolers knows, know. They watch their children and they know that firsthand that it's very difficult for those students to get their optimal learning in the morning. And to say, you know, for some people, it's fantastic you can get your older child to go to bed. But if, they surveyed many of these students, and even though parents may think that they're sleeping, sometimes they're not. But probably they are in your house. But they just are having a difficult time. And so that's just not where their body of will is. So as I started reading, I actually got into it, as he was telling me to look into this, I started researching, and the more I read, the more I read, and I just kept reading, I felt compelled to at least investigate this, like it's been said. We haven't made any decision. But it would, it would be difficult if we didn't at least investigate. We have an opportunity to possibly provide them with something better. And maybe this isn't the best for Denville. We'd have to see all of the things. But if we look at specifically for learners, it is. I'm speaking from an educational and health and safety position. I'm not talking about the conveniences or the buses or any of those. My role as the educational specialist is to really look at what's the impact on kids from that perspective. And from that perspective, there is ample research at middle school and adolescents. All of those, you know, ages are on there. You can read all of the articles about there. Please go on the website. I just had a short presentation. I was trying to.
No, I know. I appreciate that.
It took hundreds of pages and pages and I have that.
It just would be very much more comforting to know that there is something in Denville that we need to do better. These are the reasons why. But whatever, what is the, what is it, what does it look like for real for us? Do you know what I mean?
And for the most part, when, like the arguments, well, my student does okay. But we really, the hard part, without looking at research, to say, my student wouldn't do better if they actually were on their own rhythm or on a better sleep schedule, a healthier sleep schedule. We don't know. I mean, the research could show it. But I'm saying, with my own child, or your child, you wouldn't know unless they were on something different. So all we can do, but all we can do is look at what research shows. I'm not, you know, it's not a whiskey as in I'm making this up.
No, I know, but.
It's really, it's really, there are truly thousands and thousands of training and research. So I mean, that's where it comes from.
Thank you.
If you're trying to find the best optimal. Maybe it's eight, maybe it's 8:30, maybe it's seven.
Thank you.
I'm Lisa Beck, 7 Gardner Road, and obviously Denville. I'm here tonight to get information. I have, I have some thoughts about it. I actually work in a district that just changed the times this year. But, and I have my own opinions. But I'm finding that my opinions are based on my work schedule and my husband's work schedule and the convenience for us. And that's not what I want this decision to be about. I want it to be about what's best for the kids. So I came here tonight hoping to kind of, you know, get some more facts. And I'm hearing the opinions and I respect everyone's opinion. But I think we're missing a big chunk of this, which is the money. And I'm just curious how much money this will save to go from a three-tier system to a tier, a two-tier system. And not only how much money, but what you guys, what we plan to do then with that money, which I'm assuming will be to help benefit the students. But I think that's a big piece of this. Because it's not just about, you know, sleep patterns and things like that. Because there is a high school that isn't changing. So we're at this level, like this, this timeframe, then this, and then we go back down. And I think, you know, that will be probably difficult for the kids. So I think it's not just about sleep. I think it's also about the money, so.
At this point, there's no plan to save money. We may save some money. The reason, if we, if we went with what our, our consultants came up with a, with a plan that would really eliminate a lot of bus stops, I mean, more than half. So we decided, you know what? I mean, even though we'd be able to save some money on that, as a, as a board, we had a long discussion about that. We realized this, the beginning of this wasn't to save money, so the end shouldn't be. So what we said was, why don't we not eliminate all those extra runs and buses? Give back as much as we possibly can to be able to do it more efficiently? To cut down on our ride times. Right now, our average ride time is 30 minutes. We'd like to bring that average ride time down to around 20 minutes. And we'd like to have our maximum ride time be about 30 minutes from 45. We're trying to do those kinds of things. And we could do it by eliminating buses and things like that and really have a lot of extra, cut down a lot of stops. Or we can just add back some of those. And that was the decision we took. Not to, not to really base this on money, but to really base it on what's good for kids and allowing them to sleep and not be on the buses long and not have the buses start as early. So at this point, there's really not a big amount of saving. We may be able to do a couple special ed runs in-house. That could be a savings. But I really won't know about this until we really finalize what the bus stops will look like.
Okay, thank you.
And the one thing I wanna add to that is, at no point when this came up did anyone say, hey, we wanna try and save some money, what can we do? And then someone suggested two buses. And as a matter of fact, when it was sort of discussed in either committee or even our last meeting, which you can always get on YouTube. I don't think the idea of what people's opinions, what their opinions were, was anything based upon what sort of dollars could be saved. I don't, I don't think we even, we won't know like Steve says until we get to the point where we know how many stops might be saved or how many runs might be saved or none, what we might do with those funds to get back. But this isn't a cost-cutting measure. This isn't a, you know, try and save a couple pennies. That's not what this is. This is, the genesis of this was, how do we give a better education to kids?
Hi, I'm Gina Loder. I'm at 12 Spree Lane. I'm also a teacher in another local district. I actually just have some questions because my son does not take the bus. I need to use morning care in the morning. So my question is, whether you went with option A or option B, with the time that, you know, parents are allowed to drop them off in the morning, would that change? Because if it did, then it would impact me getting to my classroom, especially the option B time. And then reverse, at the end of the day, he does not take the bus, he's a walker and I pick him up. So when my end time would be at 3 o'clock, if you were at the option A, and he, elementary school, he's a second grader, would get out at 2:53, well, now we have an issue with my job. I can't leave until my dismissal. I'm sure you have the same rule for your teachers. You can't leave till the last bus is called. Which we all know never happens until the very end, like the longest possible time ever. So my question is now, while you're not going to be saving any money with this, if this was to happen.
Why, I'm sorry, I didn't say that. I said, you don't really.
No, I get that. But my thing is that I'm gonna be spending more money because then I'm gonna have to do after-school care. Which I really, I'm not a fan of the Y to begin with for morning, but that's a whole nother story. But my question is, like that now impacts me. And my husband works in the city. So like Stacy said, like I'm on my own until he gets off the bus at 6:30 on a good night. 7 o'clock if it's really bad traffic. And that's not even winter. So just logistically, like, you know, would morning care still stay the same? Because I think as of right now, you can drop off as of 7:00 AM.
Is that Riverview?
Yes, this is at Riverview.
Yeah.
We would have to offer it at the other schools too. These are all things that we could, we can definitely do things to help your situations and.
And then it's gonna cost count.
But then it's gonna cost me more money. And I don't wanna spend any more than I'm already spending.
We're not, we're not at the point to be able to say that, number one, what the times are, we're certainly.
No, no, I know that. I'm just, these are things to think about.
But I don't know that it's fair for us to be able to answer a question about what it may or may not cost.
No, what I'm saying, it's something to think about.
Because there was a couple ideas about floating out if there were savings to use that as some sort of, you know, not something that's paid by the parents, but something as a program that, man, I mentioned similarly in a different district. Not throwing you into it, but there are different programs and different possibilities to do. We wanna try and make it as a convenient course for parents, but at the end of the day, like I said, we look for the education of the kids.
Right.
That's what we're trying to focus on.
But then on the flip side too, then that's impacting me because then as an educator, I can't leave my kids. To come, I gotta leave, I gotta get my kid at school. You know what I'm saying? So it's kind of like a double-edged sword for me. So that's just what I'm gonna say. Thanks.
I know this is sort of speaking out of turn, but I'm happy to have everybody come and make their comments and make their comments, because we wanted it so that as we move forward, we have it as part of the dialogue. We can't think about every possible thing that could impact people. But when we invite you in, you can let us know what impacts you, so we can take it into consideration and we make decisions. So I'm grateful for everyone being here, as Dave's concerned.
Hi, I'm Kathy Dinkowski. I live on Seven Cathy Terrace, which is on the other side of Route Ten. My kids have about a half an hour commute. That's actually probably a lot, twenty-five minutes. And I, yeah, twenty-five minutes, Dave. And when I bought that house, I knew that was going to be their commute for three short years, and I was fine with that. I'm an educator, I'm also a nurse, and we can't base it on generalizations. We just can't. My kids, I make them go to bed at nine-thirty. If we're going to base something on research, if we're going to base change on research, let's look at the amount of homework these kids have every night. That affects their sleep. I'm a working parent. I need to be at work at a certain time. My husband does, too. This is not the change we want to make. And also, let's build some resiliency. If the kids are a little tired, let them put themselves to bed a little bit earlier. They're young adults. That's it.
Hi, Cheryl Shag, S-C-H-G-Y, Two-Mill Top Court. Some of you know me, some of you don't. So sorry. I don't need answers, but I'm just going to toss out some questions, because I need to get home and get my kids in bed, which is my normal routine. I have a Valley View kid, a high school kid, and a college kid. So I just want to know, have you asked the kids? I know what my daughter's answer is, she doesn't want it. So please start there. I don't need any of you to respond. This is just the beginning of the process, no? Thank you. Okay. Okay. If you're going to start, first of all, when did y'all put cameras in my house and I didn't know about it? I don't need you to parent my children. And if you're going to parent my children, who can I send my college tuition bill to? Okay? I have a lot of respect for this board and the teachers. I've been in this district a long time. I think the homework level is great. Give them more. So by a show of hands, because I know, but maybe some of the other audience members don't, who, sitting at that table, gets paid to be at that table?
This table here?
Yes, sir. Who gets paid?
Just the three of us.
There you go. I pay part of your salary, right? Because I pay taxes here. I pay a lot of taxes. So I do not believe when you say that you're doing this for the best of my child, because I can tell you, ask my child, and then you can ask me. I have more respect for the staff and parents and kids of this town. And just because I don't come to every board meeting doesn't mean, doesn't mean that I'm not involved in some way. I do not believe you're doing this for obesity and nurse league and blah, 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 because Mrs. Ingraham, right, you need a well-rounded child. Ask my child. And if you want more of a one-on-one meeting, I'd be happy to make an appointment. Because I know that everybody doesn't want to hear me just complain, and I'm not concerned. I just want to do what's best, okay? This isn't it. Ask the kids first. I don't work, but I'm one of the hardest-working, non-paid parents in Denver. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Katie Dopkin. I live at Seven Horizon Drive over on the other side of Route Ten. My comment question is to do with the option B that you guys presented, the eight-thirty start time for our elementary kids. What happens to our children now who get up early no matter what? They are now more tired when they start school, so they're going to perform worse than if they had started earlier. And they go to bed earlier, so they're going to get home at four, four-thirty, depending on what time the bus gets in. And they have now sports, they have to eat, and they have to do homework in three hours, less than that. So how is that going to affect them? And also, what streets are technically considered the safety streets on outside of the town? Because I can tell you that if our bus stop is eliminated or moved, my child's not taking the bus anymore. I live up Smith Road, and Smith Road is dangerous. It is not safe for my child, even in that, at Valley View age, to walk in the morning across that street. People fly up and down. They will hate my child. So our schools are not prepared for that. So that's something that definitely needs to be considered, because nobody knows what our safety streets are over there unless it's probably passed along. I don't know any other ones that would be considered that. So that's something to consider. Oh, is it? Okay.
And those come from the police department.
Yeah, no, I knew that comes. It's just, it's never been pointed out to the parents. So that's just something that...
It wasn't at the last board meeting. You guys said at the last board meeting, there was two routes, right, that were considered safe out of all of them?
There's a list of, yeah, there's a list of streets and intersections and...
Well, there might be two streets that are safe to walk to school from, I'm thinking. Safe or unsafe? We have a list of hazardous routes in our policy.
Right, there was two safe routes, right? Two safe streets that the police, the chief police said were safe. That's what you guys said at the last meeting.
I would tell you that, but there's a significant list of streets that are not safe.
Right.
Right, well, if only there were...
That's what I'm saying, there's two safe ones of the routes to the bus, right? I was just answering your question. You did say... He's been a performer, and I know, so I know a lot of people who have that same situation.
Thank you.
Dave Luer, Nine Wildwood Terrace. I've got a couple of questions. Excuse me, Mr. Napoloni, you said earlier that they haven't decided which bus stops to drop. But have you decided on the criteria by which you're going to decide which bus stops to drop?
No, I was telling you that we're not even, I go by Dave, by the way. No, we're not. We're not there yet.
Okay. Do we know when that will be happening?
So first step...
That's going to be like, what's the timeframe for this whole process?
So step number one was definitely having this meeting. Like I said, we wanted to make sure that as early as possible, when it was in consideration, that put out as much information as we had as of this moment. I think it's Steve that talked about earlier. You know, part of the next steps, if the board chooses to continue down this path of investigation, is to start coming up with potential ideas of where stops may or may not be. And that's something that would be shared with the public well in advance of next full year, absolutely. I mean, who's talking about the next couple of months? So part of that process is going to happen over the next couple of months. And I think it's going to be a trial and error. I don't think anything's perfect here. I think you say this stop works, this one doesn't, and then you look at it again and you reverse it or try to look at what's best. But we're not there yet.
Okay. One of the concerns that my wife had was, will Valley View, will the middle school and the elementary school students be on the same bus at the same time? Is that something that would ever possibly happen?
No, that would not happen.
Okay. You mentioned earlier the consultants that talked about the bus stop reductions. Is it possible that that report could be made public?
Sure.
Because that would be something I'd be very interested to see what assumptions they were making and how they were working with that. Is that something that can be posted on the, or is it something that has to be like individual emails or something?
No, no, it can be posted, it will be posted, it's in a draft form right now, because we're going back and forth on, we don't want to make all these cuts, we want to go back and forth, things like that. So we're not finished with it.
The same question for the safe routes and hazardous routes, is there...
That's a policy that's online now.
Okay, cool. Which policy is it?
Trade for eighty-six hundred, I think. I think it's eighty-six hundred. I think it's on the...
Hi, I'm Linda Rodriguez. I live at Fifteen Union Road. I'm also on the other side of Route Ten. I have three boys, all of which are kindergartners, a third grader, and a fifth grader. And to think that they're also up early, every day, they're up at six AM. So for me, for the bus, or the school times start later, I mean, they'd just be sort of hanging out at home, watching TV. I mean, they're just, you know, they're crazy in the morning. You just, they kind of want to get to school. So I know option B would be hard for me. I would do anything. And I do want to say, I do appreciate all the research that you've done, and it's great that we have a board that's willing to talk to people and listen to people and, you know, for the benefit of our school and for our children. I think, you know, Dr. Collis, I know you did a lot of work and researching, and it's kind of coming down hard on you, but, you know, listen, I think it's great. This is why we have a board for all this, this is awful. But I do know for me personally, having three young children, they do fade out at the end of the day. So if they're starting later, dating earlier, you know, the end of the school day for them is just going to be rough. And then, yeah, the sports, coming home, trying to cram in homework and eating dinner before we get off to a sport, that's going to be hard, but... So I think for the younger kids, if you could keep the early four times, it's great.
Hi there. I'm Sherri Rousseau. I live at Twenty-Eight Chestnut Hill Drive East. Please don't publish that in the newspaper. You know, first of all, I want to thank you for presenting the information, and thank you for showing up, because the fact that you're here, you will be in the know, and then you can go ahead and share what you have learned this evening. First and foremost, you know, we're all here because we have the same interests at heart, and that's our kids. We've heard about our kids. We heard about our schedules as parents. Can you tell I'm nervous? But we have not heard about teachers. So, you know, I'm interested in knowing, will this take away from our kids' after-school hours? Our kids are involved in a lot after-school. Our teachers, we have fantastic teachers here. A, we don't want to lose them, and B, we want them to continue to go over and beyond for our kids. After hours, flag football, STEM, staying after-school, forever and ever. These teachers are now going to be in a position where they too have to run home, if it's at four-thirty, five o'clock, whatever it may be. That's my first point. My second point is, again, I appreciate the fact that we need to have our kids sleep more, but at the end of the day, those of us who do work and have childcare in the morning, I'll still have to get my kids up at six AM. Whether they're starting at eight-thirty or not, my kids are up at six AM. So it goes back to childcare. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Lou Campagnelli, Five Thirty-Two Openaki Road. Pretty much the same statement. In the theoretical world, if they were able to sleep until nine-thirty, that'd be great. We're up at six, you're not going to take them until nine-thirty. They're just going to be in before-care, you know, just like they're in after-care now. So I did my research with a couple telephone calls, telephone calls to the folks living over in Randolph, and they're like, don't do it, don't let it happen, because it's home from school, dinner, bath, bed. It was like there's minutes to do homework, you know? And I spoke to three different households, and they all said the same thing. You know, after, there's just not enough hours in the day, and when they get home, dinner, bath, bed, and done. And they, same thing. In the morning, the free-care program is packed over there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, guys.
Gene Fitzpatrick. Snyder Avenue.
First of all, as somebody who I think can appreciate a lot of what you do back there on the other side of the table, thank you all. You know, one thing we really should keep in mind about these guys is, you're putting in a lot of long hours yourselves, and I know three of you are certainly at your job, but as far as the Board of Ed, it really is appreciated. And I think you really are having this so that you can hear what we're saying, so I think we have to definitely appreciate that. I think something that is brought up that I think is, was sort of eye-opening, and I do think that a lot of those studies, especially with the AAP, the Pediatric Association, but as well, the National Sleep Foundation, the American Psychological Association, a lot of them do show these studies with, I think primarily adolescents. So I think the topic is important, but from my personal observation, I think it's more impactful in the older kids, in the high school level. I don't pretend to have any of the answers of what the policy should be. That is certainly your God's job to decide, and we trust you with that. We can only give you our opinions on it and hope you'll make the right decisions. I do think that maybe as parents, with some of this issue, you know, we should look at the regional Board of Ed and, you know, bring these things up there. And I don't know if it's about earlier start times. I know that's hard in high school, but there's, you know, plenty of other organizations that do extensive sleep education in high school, you know, teaching kids how to cope. It sounds crazy, but there was a, like, you know, state championship soccer team, the coach insisted that they have naps. You know, it was one of his things that, you know, once you get off school, he wanted everybody to have a power nap. And it works for an adult, too. Very important. So I think there's, you know, a couple of different issues going on. In looking at some of those studies, at least from my perspective, while there is certainly a lot of studies on adolescents, to me, while there is the sort of theory that younger kids certainly get up earlier, I wasn't convinced from what I saw, and I may not have seen everything, but from what I've seen of National Sleep Foundation, APA, AAP, that I didn't see a lot of really convincing studies from my perspective on the very young age. So for me, I'd be very hesitant. While I agree the older ages, maybe we could look at something, at least whether it be education, or figure out how to better deal with lack of sleep and how much of an issue it is. In those younger ages, my only, you know, comment would be, I hope that you won't look at really making those young, young kids start much earlier. I mean, it could maybe go five, ten minutes earlier, but my recommendation would, I don't think that the younger kids really can start much earlier. I think there's just too many other things going on. While they do wake up earlier, it takes a long time for them to sort of get moving. You know, we do have a massive national problem with ADHD and things like that. We need to keep them, I think, a little bit looser of a schedule without, you know, really messing up things too much. So my recommendation would just be, I hope you wouldn't make the young kids go much earlier. And I will be the first, from personal experience, I think you probably could cut down on bus stops. I'll be the first one to say it, just on our street. We've got one right in front of our house. That's great, thank you. Very nice. But honestly, my kid, he can walk half a block. He definitely could. It'd probably be good for him. So I do think you could look at that. But I feel like the sleep thing, the bus thing, they're a little bit, almost two different things. And that would be my perspective, but thank you again, all of you.
Hi, my name is John Bowdich, Odie Richwood Place here in Denver. I don't have any kids in the school system today. I have two that went through it, but they're now in their 40s, so I don't know what's happened. They found out by the right time, I guess. Anyway, I'm here because I have been a substitute school bus driver for the Denver system for the past 10 years. So I think I have a somewhat unique perspective on some of the situations that are existing out there. You talk about having pickups at six-thirty. I agree, there are some pickups at six-thirty, and I've driven every single route in this town, so I know that there are pickups at six-thirty, but very, very few. We have three or four buses that leave the yard before six-thirty, and most of them are going to the south end of town, where it takes you 20 minutes to get there, or they could take, with traffic, it can take you more than that. So I think, you know, I think my sense is that the average length of time a kid is on the bus is probably no more than 20 minutes, 20, 25 minutes. Okay, that's one thing. Second thing, at the beginning of each year, I get a three-inch binder of all the bus routes that we have in town. I went through that, and I counted the number of stops that we currently have, and we have 181 intersection stops, Street A versus Street B. We also have 193 residential stops, for a total of 373 stops today. And I've heard comments about going to 100 stops. That's, I don't see how you can do that. You can't go from 373 to 100 stops. My opinion. Okay, another thing. St. Mary's, we have courtesy busing with St. Mary's. We need to coordinate with them, I presume. I don't know whether anybody's talked to the folks over there, but they typically, you know, we pick them up on the River View runs. you know, we pick them up on the Riverview runs. So that would have to be coordinated. He said the high school wasn't gonna make changes, but would St. Mary's be able to make changes as well? Another comment has to do with the sports situation. I've driven a number of sports teams to various places and a lot of the teams that we play are in locations that are at least a half hour, 45 minutes away. So if you're talking about ending the day at 3:23 or so, you're not talking about them getting to that field until 4:00. They usually need time to warm up and all that kind of stuff. If you extend it a half hour, they're not getting back to Valley View until 6:30 or quarter to 7:00. They usually get back around 6:00, quarter up to 6:00 right now. So that's another consideration you need to make. Okay, another thing. I agree with the parking situation. We have several stops that have, making mega students being picked up. If we're gonna create more of these mega stops, we're gonna have serious parking situations. Buses are gonna have a hard time getting through. People are gonna be trying to get around the buses, getting off, you know, there's gonna be mass confusion, I perceive. Okay, two more things. I've always found that stops that have a lot of kids at them tend to be, the kids on those stops tend to be much more noisy and more active than the stops where you have just one or two. I think it's probably natural because they're out there throwing footballs before the bus gets there, they're having, you know, games, they're doing all kinds of good things. They're getting their act of one that you're on the bus, they don't calm down as much as if you have a bus with just stops with one or two kids at each one. And finally, as a substitute school bus driver, I know we have, in the afternoon, we have to be sure that the younger kids have a parent there to meet them. Well, when you have a mega stop, it's much more difficult to know whether a student has a parent there, especially for a substitute driver like me who isn't that familiar with the students on the bus. So I think that's gonna be a problem for me personally as a substitute, to know that the kids have parents there waiting for them when they get off the bus. And I just have to stick around until I make sure that they're all taken care of, I guess. That's gonna extend the bus run. So that's, those are some of my thoughts, my comments. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, my name is Andrea Callahan. I live at 9 Suma Drive. I've promised my husband I would not get up and speak. But... And he's never watched YouTube. Show up the video. But there's just one thing that's sticking in my mind that I just wanted to bring up. In the beginning presentation, it was said that, you know, five or six hours of night sleep is not healthy for a middle schooler. Eight and a half, nine hours is much healthier. I just want to know if anybody here has any kids that sleep like five hours a night? Because I think the average middle schooler is actually sleeping eight, nine hours a night. You'd have to go to bed 12:00, 1:00 in the morning to be getting five, six hours of sleep. And I think just the way to, I just think, am I the only one putting the kids to bed to get eight and a half?
No, like, eleven, eleven hours sleep.
But that's what I'm saying. So I just, that was the only thing that stuck out in my head was in the presentation was the five to six hours. I mean, if your kid's getting five to six hours a night, that's crazy. And I think the average is getting eight and a half to nine hours. So some may be a little less and some a little more. But that's it. That was the only point that stuck out in my head. Thank you.
Hi. Taran Peck. I live in Beach Place. I taught for nine years at high school, so I completely understand the want for students to sleep once. I agree on that part of this. Homeroom for me was like 7:15. My kids were half asleep in homeroom for years. So as a teacher, I'm totally on your side for this. As a parent, I'm a special needs student who already doesn't have the appropriate type of busing. So this kind of concerns me because I hear you talking about less bus stops. I know you said maybe something with special needs before in-house, someone mentioned that up there. So I just know that my son has nine kids in his class. Five of us pick our students up every single day because it's just not the busing that's individualized for them. They aren't, they can't be on a bus for 45 minutes and that's what my son would be at the end of the day. He's going to Smith at 2:50 and his bus stop wouldn't get home till 3:35. There's no aid on his bus, okay? It's not a small bus. It's a large bus with K through five, like, it's not appropriate. And so a lot of us are doing this as special needs parents, we're picking our kids up every day, which is fine now because I've resigned to do this. But in the future, this is kind of scaring me a little more that you're saying that you're cutting back on buses and cutting back on stops because already, like, he's never gonna be able to walk to school, you know, so I'm gonna have to be doing this every day. So I'm just concerned for a lot of the kids in our class and other special needs parents who did come but had to leave because we already worry about our kids. We don't want to have to worry even more about our kids. So I was just kind of hoping you guys would take that into consideration. I'm still kind of working on busing this year. It's not really working very well. So please just think about us. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Melissa Blum. I live on 5 Ramsey Place. I'm on the other side of 10. And again, I knew I used to live right around the corner from Riverview. We moved, totally had our third to the other side of town. I knew we'd be for commute, so, but I've been very happy. I have two middle schoolers and a high school. And I'm hearing a lot, I mean, I think it's great that you're looking into this and you're looking for the best thing for the children, but what I'm hearing is a lot of people are concerned about morning care because I work, my husband works, so I won't be there. It would be very difficult for me to be there to put my sixth grader, I have an eighth grader, so it's not gonna affect him, but my sixth grader, you know, it'll be very hard for me to put him on the bed. And now, my sixth grader is different than anybody else. 8:30, he's asleep no matter what night it is. He's just the type of kid, but he's up at 6:00 every morning, so he gets plenty of sleep. But maybe what you could do is when we're looking at all this research, maybe we can send out a survey and actually ask the people that this could affect, how is this gonna affect the kids in the morning? So if you're gonna have to put your kid into morning care and they're gonna have to get up at 6:00 anyways, they're not getting that benefit of that sleep. So if the majority of the people, or the children, are not gonna get that benefit, well, then maybe it's not worth it. In theory, everything is better, but in reality, it's never worked out. So that's all. Maybe just this way, everybody has a chance to speak and then you do the majority thus. That's it.
My name is Jennifer Priestnor. I live at 5 Whitman Drive. I wanted to sort of reiterate what she just said about finding out if we could send a survey out to the parents because this is a very, very small fraction of the parents in this, that are gonna be affected by this. I know a survey went out last year about transportation in general. I don't really recall if there were specific questions about would you be affected if there were bus stops eliminated? But I did have a question to find out. Has anyone talked to parents or have we found out how this year's changes affected anybody? Is it costing anybody more money because they're not, they're bus stopped that eliminated and now they're driving to school? Is there more traffic at school? I mean, we experienced a change this year already. Has anyone looked into, has that affected? Did you see an elimination of bus stops? Is it a positive effect?
There's not, there's not a big difference in the amount of people driving their kids to school, if that's one of the metrics of that. For example, as a matter of fact, Valley View actually has a decline in how many people, decrease in how many people. And Riverview's pretty much steady. Lakeview's pretty much steady.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to point out, and again, a lot of the parents mentioned this tonight, was I have a fifth grader and a second grader. They go to bed when I tell them to go to bed. I'm actually waking my second grader up usually between 7:30 and 8:00. He is not an early wake-up person. Every family's different. Every child is different. We have parents that are gonna be getting their kids up to go to daycare regardless of what time school starts. So I worry that we're trying to make this change so that kids get more sleep when you really can't make that change. Changing the start time for school doesn't mean kids are gonna get more sleep. It doesn't. It just, it doesn't. It means people are gonna have to change their routines. It may cost more money, which leads me to another question of, can we send a survey out and when we say, if we're gonna change the start time to school, is that gonna cost you money? Not, is this gonna change your routine? Is this gonna cost you money? My other question is, and somebody pointed this out, I think it was you, Dave. It seems we have two sides not to recommend and we don't vote on each other.
Exactly. So I would put out the agenda.
They recommended us, that the seven of us have to vote.
Okay.
And that's what ultimately decides.
I was so happy to hear from a bus driver. So happy that you came tonight to give your view. We didn't have to, we don't have kids, but you gave us a view that nobody had heard of. And my kids are on the bus about 10 minutes. And they get on the bus like 8:17, 8:20. It's late. I'm, I would gladly increase that to 20 minutes if it meant the kids over on the other side of 10 were on it for 10 minutes shorter. I just have to believe that with the amount of kids over there, with the amount of kids everywhere, we could come up with a solution where the kids aren't on the bus that long, that live far away. And maybe the kids that are two minutes away are on it for 15 minutes. I don't think, maybe I'm wrong. I don't know, I don't know if parents would really fuss about what's either half an hour earlier for school or your kid's gonna be on the bus an extra five or 10 minutes. I just think that's worth noting. And that's it. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
They're signing over there, so we stream one.
Hi, my name's Valil Vado. I live at 97 Woodstone Road. I have just two questions. My son is only in kindergarten, so we're completely new to this whole thing, but if the middle school's gonna be starting at 8:30 and then at high school they're starting at 7:30, how's that gonna affect them going an hour earlier in our summer? And then my second question, in just a second. Why can't we have the two elementary start, do a two-tier system and have the two elementary still start at 8:00? You can then combine the programs, do, you know, the joint you want to do, but not change the start times for the middle school? Because if they're gonna have to start at high school early, they can't be pushing them back to have them come forward. So do the two-tier, have the two elementary start at the same time?
We, that's something we could definitely do, but we would have to, also, we'd have to still continue with some of those changes to be more efficient.
Yeah, no, definitely change the system, make it a two-tier bus system, but not necessarily push the middle school back to 8:30 because now we're talking about morning care again.
Yeah.
Like, wouldn't that just basically affect like our buses, like we were saying? I mean, a lot of us have buses that are empty. You know, that could be possible. You know? And like you guys were saying, you know, you have one bus stop at the lake communities. You know, condense the bus stops. A lot of us parents work and drive anyways.
We can't go bus stop.
No, no, no.
I will admit that there are empty buses and there are probably two reasons for that. First off, you may be at the start of a run.
Yep.
And who knows how many kids are getting on after you? Secondly, we probably don't take more than 75, 60 to 75% of the people that are assigned to a bus actually drive to us. And that's the parent's, you know, choice. So, I mean, when you see an empty bus, it isn't necessarily a, you know, on paper, an empty bus. Because by the time it gets to the school, it may be full or it may have 49 kids assigned to it and only 30 of them get on it.
Wouldn't it be better to send out a survey before on who's gonna take the bus before they assign the routes? Then you know that some of these kids whose parents are gonna drive them no matter what aren't taking up spots on this bus, so you can condense?
Yeah.
But they always have the right suit take the bus and you can't, no.
And we've talked about this, I've talked to Mr. Forte about this because I had the same concern when I came on the board was I said, you know, hey, the buses that are empty, that are driving by me that I follow to the school, that I see them drop off, have it bus full. The problem is, is if you go to parents and say, "Hey, tell me if your kids are gonna take the bus." If my kids are gonna take the bus five times a year, I'm gonna say, "Hey, reserve a spot for me." Everybody's gonna say that, right? So you're gonna have full buses anyway. So that's what we always run into. And we have even allocated down, I believe, the percentages on how much we allocate for the full buses and everything. It's not an easy situation. We deal with it all the time, but if you give the option to a parent, they're always gonna say, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, reserve a spot for me because I'm already paying for it in my tax money," so.
I don't, I don't know. I mean, I know several allergy parents who don't send their kids on the bus because they don't feel safe. So even if you eliminate 10, 15 kids, that's 10, 15 kids that could be on a bus instead of another bus. 15 kids on every bus is a big difference. So that's just something to consider. And also, I pulled up the hazardous route list. Smith and Casterline are not on it. So that's something that is a major factor. And Mabrow isn't on it. Mabrow's just as dangerous.
You know what? It's getting extended, it's okay.
Sorry. I was just trying to throw those two things.
That's okay.
That's it. So.
Any other comments? All right. Actually, I want to move on to superintendent's comments and then we'll come back up into the...
It's a point of order, Mr. Forte. We gotta put the board comment on this issue.
Yeah, Tom.
You do that before the superintendent's comment?
Good, Tom. All yours.
Thank you.
You don't have to get to the voting yet.
All right. The last meeting, the board voted to move forward with the study that we've talked about for a couple hours now. I was the only one that voted no. I didn't think it was productive use of our administrator's time to move forward. So these are all good people up here. Most of the time, we're all on the same page, but every now and then, we're not. So I'm not interested in moving forward on this, okay? And these are some transparency, we'll give you numbers because they're important, okay? The initial number of stops that were gonna be eliminated was like 70% of our bus stops. So that was a lot. And then to consider the hazards routes, which I brought up is a big problem, especially if some of the people opt to walk. So that was reduced now, so we're gonna be, again, the numbers can change if we move forward, but right now, the last numbers I was given is 33% of the bus stops are gonna be, would be eliminated. So that's gonna be a big issue for traffic because I can guarantee, especially listening to some of you parents here tonight, some people are definitely not gonna be walking to the bus stops of some of these roads like Riverside Drives, Kamakazi Run, Inchman Avenue, very dangerous. So the parents will drive the kids to the bus stop or, in the Riverview area, you're pretty close to Riverview, so why go to the bus stop? They'll go to Riverview School. So right now, you have an average 228 parents dropping their kids off at school. That's gonna increase. What the number is, I don't know. Maybe a survey would bring that out. In the past, we've had major traffic congestion issues on some of the bus stops where we needed police interaction as well as the schools. So this is probably gonna happen again with our police activity to work with that. But some of these roads, you go down Cooper Road during rush hour, between people going to school, people going to, taking a shortcut to Route 10, they're very congested roads in Denver. It's a great town to live in, but one of the biggest problems we have is traffic, okay? We talked about the Morris Knowles High School and the Morris Hills Regional District. I've talked to a number of people I know up there. That's just not gonna change. So we want to prepare our kids for high school, get them used to getting up early. The American Pediatric Study, I looked at that, and this is an interesting paragraph at the end, I'm gonna read to you, I quote, okay? "It should be, also be emphasized that the lane school start times alone is less likely to have a significant effect without con commitment, attention to other contributing and potentially remediable factors such as excessive demands of students' time because of homework, extracurricular activities, after-school employment, social networking, and electronic media use," okay? And there's the studies now, these kids look at the iPads, the phones before they go to bed and, you know, before they go to bed, that interrupts their sleep. So making this change is not gonna be a cure-all for any academic, we're talking about 30 minutes here, okay? 30 minutes. And, you know, turning a, the whole bus schedule upside down. I've been on the board for nine years. I interact with a lot of parents throughout the years because I'm involved with soccer. I see some of my munchkin moms present or former here, okay? Talk to a lot of parents and kids. I have some great high school kids that have worked for me, helping me coach over the years. None of them come up to me and say, "Coach Don, if we can only get some more sleep," okay? Nobody, okay? Now, I talked to, I talked to some of the parents. I'm glad to see we have some parents here believe in tough love, right? Get in the bed, right? Okay. I talked to the parent of last year's Morris Knowles valedictorian and I said, how, it was to me, Ford, most people know who the kids are. was to me, Ford, most people know who the kid is, a great kid, he coached soccer with me, he did three sports, he did soccer, he did indoor track and, and outdoor track in the spring. And I said, well, you know, how did, how did Timmy do it? Well, Timmy was an overachiever, okay, and a great work ethic, he did what he had to do to get good grades, all right? So he did go to bed late sometimes, no doubt about that, and he was tired, but he persevered because he had tremendous work ethic. So, you want to succeed in life, you got, you got to work hard, okay? I also talked to some other people, parents about their kids, and like many of you said, the kids go to bed early. They have a schedule, and a lot of these kids are all involved with a lot of extracurricular activities besides sports, they do a lot of community activities, community service, and they, they learn to manage your time, and they, and they get their sleep, and they're in a routine, so that, that has a lot to do with it. So, you, you change a school schedule here, there's absolutely no guarantee the kid's going to go to bed early. Some of the studies I've read, they go to bed later, you never going to know what they're, what they're going to do, okay? A lot of these studies that have been done, the demographics are really not applicable to Denble, they, Minneapolis study was an urban area, urban school districts, we had one in Kentucky where they said the shifting the problem for adolescents, the younger children, it was not a good idea. The schedule change had no benefit for some of the low-income students, so it's different in every areas. What, what size doesn't fit all the school districts? So, the time management of the kids is, is important. And the other thing, we talked about the sports schedule, we play nine other teams in our middle school, okay? These other districts may, may change their times, they may not, okay, but I assure you, they're not going to want to start their games a half an hour later at home, or get home later from visiting Denble for a game, because we changed our, our sports time, it's just not, it's just not going to happen, it's not realistic, okay? And then letting those kids out of school early feeds the purpose, right? They're here to get an education. So we don't want to move them out of school early to go to a weight game, it doesn't make any sense. So, you know, I'd like to see, put a period at the end of this and, and not move it forward after tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Any other comments from the board?
I'm just, as I said before, grateful for everybody to come out, so that could be a part.
I wish we had more things like this, but.
You missed it earlier, I said.
I said it at the last meeting, this would bring people out, because it'll happen.
I also want to say, thank everybody for coming out. At the last meeting, I came out strongly in favor of looking into this, and that's what we're doing, we're looking into this. I think there's a lot more to know and learn, and for me, this is not over, I would like to continue looking at this and understanding the issues. From an academic point of view, from a public health point of view, I think it's important to look at it. Obviously, there's cons, there's cons to schedules, there's cons to people's work schedules, I absolutely understand that, I have the same issues, but I try, as a board member, not to let me as a parent interact with those decisions. So I hope we'll all try to continue to do that, and, you know, like I said, I'd like to see this move forward, at least to understand more exactly how this is going to work out.
And from my perspective, I want to continue moving forward with it as well. I travel a lot for work, I work sometimes in the city, sometimes in old, my wife's a teacher in the district, I had the same issues you do. But I didn't want to just kill it because it's going to impact me. Next year, I'll have both kids in Valley View, I would love to have to get rid of my nanny, sorry, eh, Maria, but that's what I look to do, and I'd have to incur that clause too, but I wanted to look at first, you know, what are the benefits before I do a decision? So, that's all I want to do, is just keep an open mind.
Any comments from the board?
I want to thank everybody for coming out, I want to thank anybody who's watching the video that sent emails, we are, this board of seven of us, I will say, is open to feedback, to understanding what you, what the parents and what the community sees, we, we can't see everything. I don't have a kid at Valley View, I've got three kids at Lakeview, so I don't have kids at Verview, so things that are happening in the schools, in the community, please let us know. This board spends thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars looking at opportunities to help kids, and this is an opportunity that we looked at that really doesn't cost us anything. So, I agree with looking at it, I don't know necessarily what side I fall on, whether I agree or disagree, but I think looking at it is, it would be a shame if we didn't look at an opportunity to potentially help the kids that costs nothing to this district. We spend thousands on teachers and workshops and technology and curriculum, and parents spend thousands of dollars on tutors and things, and if there's an opportunity that we can help the kids without spending any money, it's something I encourage the board to look at. It may or may not work, and if it doesn't work, that's fine too. I mean, there's, there's ways to look at this as, and we've talked about it a little bit, not just before care, but is there, are there things we can do where it's athletic before care? Because there's, there's studies and, and data that shows if the kids are active in the morning, then they're, they don't start academics early, but they do activities early, then they'll be ready for school when it starts. I will tell you that, that I read multiple studies, you know, one thing I will say is that we can all speak anecdotally about our situations, but when you're looking at studies of thousands of students in different environments, and yes, they are in different environments, Don, but, you know, you have to look at that type of ones when you look at studies, and I'm an engineer, so I guess I look at numbers pretty closely, and, and I was pretty impressed with some of the data that it showed, and I was surprised at it. And, and even to the point of, I know some people mentioned, well, if you, if you start later, kids are going to go to bed later. And that's not what the studies showed, they didn't show that, and it was surprising to me, because I was expecting to see that, you would normally expect to see that, but it didn't show it. So, I encourage everybody to read the information that's out there, I know Dr. Carlos has, has put it online to take a look at, please take a look at it, understand, it's going to be different for each person, I feel the same way as Carlos and Dino, in that, you know, this is going to affect me and my, my wife and I both work, it's going to affect us, but, but I look at it and would say, what's the best thing for the students of Denble? And that's what I totally, totally look at, and this may or may not be the best thing, and I'm not saying it is, but what I'm saying is, is when we make a decision, we make what's the best for the kids of Denble. So, thank you for coming out and letting us know what you guys feel is best for the kids of Denble, because you're the parents that are there. And I would encourage you that if people aren't here and they want to express their, their views, that our emails are on, on the website, please send us emails, give us a call, send me an email and just say, hey, give me a call, I'd be happy to talk to somebody. I spoke to people last night for a while, I spoke to people all weekend about this, so we're open, we, we really want to get the feedback and understand what's best for the kids, so thank you for coming out.
Yeah, I want to piggyback on, Stacy hit on the idea for the teachers aligning, I mean, for those that, you know, some that have been here a long time, the whole Lakeview, Riverview thing, I think it would be like wonderful if the K through five was on the same schedule. Like, just take yourself out of your personal situation, just show a hands, do you think that's worth pursuing, like as a group here?
Yes.
Just trying to align the two K through fives? Because you really could do like head-to-head things over the internet, you could try to literally have these exact schedules between schools. It's been, you know, we bantered about, it came up again, with the read this or think, make it K through two, make it, you know, then bring every, like, that was something that was talked about again, and I, I don't know, I, I'm definitely on the, it was a majority that told them that it wasn't a waste to like pursue and look deeper at like the pros and cons of it. But yeah, when you look at the high school schedule, like the bottom, like, like I'm looking at the hazardous routes, and I'm kind of in agreement with a lot, like Cedar Lake's not on here, there's a lot of hazardous things that aren't on here, so I don't know how we would, you know, our consciousness couldn't handle a kindergarten getting run over or something, so. No, I mean, you know, like, yeah, parent watch, I don't know how we would do it now, like, chances are, if you don't feel it's safe, you're going to come up with a solution that works for you. But like Cedar Lake isn't on here, there's a lot of things that aren't even deemed hazardous that are. So, I think that, like, if two-hundred-and-twenty-eight on average are dropped off now, we should try to see like how people feel about that, like, get a little more survey, I think the survey's a good idea, just, because if nobody's going to use it, it could create more problems than it's worth. But I, I definitely think it's worth pursuing, like, the whole aligning the K through five, to me, the sleep thing, so, I, my kids did the eight-thirty, the Riverview route through eighth grade, and they had no problem, they, they still don't want to get up, either they want to get up, or they don't want to get up, you know, but their biological clock will adjust. Now we have the opposite with the college, where they're taking three o'clock classes, I mean, so they don't have to get up, you know, they, they get resourceful, so, you know, I, you, that, that is a family thing, I would share, I agree with her, that, you know, we don't want to go there, but you have to adjust. If you decide to use before care, that's a decision that you're making for your family and stuff, and it might put, you know, if they do poor on a test, you have to ask yourself, you know, maybe they're not getting enough for us. It's a lot to think about.
I'm grateful to this board for looking always at things that can help students. I'm grateful that the board came together out of committees to decide as a whole that we wanted to take this step, so that we can decide if it's worth more administrative resources to continue down this path. For me, I heard some things that I knew already after living through some other busing issues in this town, and I heard some things that I, I'm now going to take away, we'll discuss it further, so it definitely was worth coming out and speaking to us, because I hadn't actually thought about the fact that we could push back time, I'll admit this on YouTube, and you'd still be getting up at six o'clock, the kids are still getting up, so the effect may not be there. So I would like to see a survey also, and have, definitely try and get a handle on that, because if, we're not going to impact the students we think we're impacting with this, for all of the impact it's going to have otherwise, we definitely need to look at that, I feel. So, continue to reach out to us through email, phone, whatever. Encourage people to watch, even if they can't watch the whole meeting, the part of the meeting where people discuss this, and the presentation, and that it's online, and, you know, I'm grateful for everybody coming out. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree. I talked to a lot of your parents, and I, well, one in particular last night, and I said, come, have as many people come as possible, because a lot of times I'll, I think a lot of us, I'll speak to a lot of us, I'm in a grocery store, or a gas station, or a field, and someone starts stalking me, and I'm like, it's, we talked about this in the last meeting, you know, come to the meeting. And the reason being, the joke aside, is that there's a lot of perspective that we don't necessarily get to see in here. I think like Carlos, you know, I drive my son to school in the morning now, because it's about a fifteen-minute difference in terms of how much more he gets to sleep. That's my own personal, personal perspective, you know, my wife and I both work, and, you know, getting home and off the bus and all these other things, we have the same, almost every single one of us has the exact same scenario at home, so know that a lot of these decisions that we make don't actually benefit us. I mean, as a matter of fact, the busing changes that we did, I tell Steve all the time, the busing changes that we just had, the bus stop went from the bottom of my driveway down the corner, you know, I'm like, oh, that's something happened, that's all, we're all impacted. But at the end of the day, we're supposed to be making decisions for what's better for the district. But there's a lot of things that I didn't know, I shouldn't say that, I didn't take it into perspective, that I think comes out of this. You know, the idea of going to two-tier busing, but not necessarily changing the times to, as significant a degree as we're talking about, the idea of, you know, I forget where the woman was, about talking about the educational perspective, which is true, I'd love to be able to say, this is what we got began out of it. You know, before we did the full-day kindergarten, there's a lot of talk about it, and quite frankly, a lot of people were concerned about change for full-day kindergarten, you know, my son or daughter doesn't need to go through a full-day kindergarten, they can't handle full-day kindergarten. And I think at the time, we had a lot of good sort of data on what we thought might happen, but it was a little bit of a risk, because you don't know if it's actually going to happen. The data's showing that it actually ended up being beneficial, and I had parents who didn't like full-day kindergarten, that didn't like the idea, they would come up to me and, you know, we'll not admit it on YouTube, but it certainly said they agree with it now. So it is a change, it is different, it is totally outside of what we've originally done, but the concept of looking at what's better is what we should be doing. Now we might go down two or three more runs down the road and come back and say, you know what, it's not going to work right. We have too much pushback from either a survey, or when we did all the research, we don't have a legitimate metric of what we're shooting for, that we don't have the right resources, that we can't cut enough on stops, or it may cost too much money, or it may be an issue with contracts, I don't know, there's all sorts of things. But I think we should always be investing, and we should have more of your peers coming to our meetings and talking about it, and emailing people, and stopping at the grocery store, or whoever, talk more about it. And I think that's, that's very beneficial, so thank you for that, to echo what everyone else has said. You know, Don's perspective is absolutely right in a lot of ways as well, but I still think we should be considering what else we can look at. And I think the administration needs to take a lot of what's said tonight and mull it over and come up with some options that may be in line or out of line, or give us a recommendation at the end of the day that says, this is what we should be doing, we're not doing.
I also appreciate, you know, all the comments, you take them apart, remember, we are just in the research phase, and my role was to research all the positive and benefits that we could do from educational, so.
Yeah, don't shoot the messenger.
I feel a little bit that I'm getting.
Don't shoot the messenger.
Truly, the more I read, the more positive it was, so although I went in just looking at all the things, I really could not find articles or research that said that more sleep was not beneficial for the children. So, all of the benefits that I have listed, please, if you have a chance, you look at, my role is to present what's best for children, I have no alter your motive, I have three of my own children, but I don't, I don't put a Denble, so I'm not invested as far as those pieces, that's your role, but I, it is my job to research and, and get sure that I'm presenting the material and the most current and accurate information that's available for our children.
Yeah, so don't shoot the messenger, she was directed by the board. So, tell your friends, there's going to be more discussion about this, there's going to be more perspective, there's going to be more conversation, there's going to be more asking for input, whether it be via survey or other components, and please, give us as much as you know, or you think, or want to know, ask questions, and as this progresses down this path of who knows what, and if there is, we'll have your input, and hopefully you can appreciate that. So, thank you for that. We're going to continue with board meetings, feel free to stay, I know it's exciting with this. We're going to talk about one-tier busing maybe at the next meeting, I know, it's your choice, but, single-layer buses?
It's late.
I think we should have a fleet of single-level buses.
So that being said, I'm going to go to superintendent's comments.
Superintendent's comments. So, we talked a little bit about this, but I'm going to continue until it passes, and then we'll talk about it again. We also, we do have Computer Science Week coming up, which is December seventh through the thirteenth, which is sponsored by Hour of Code, which is a big multinational group that, pretty much a hundred, a hundred million plus people do this thing on December, the week of December seventh. We are working with the, with the high school, and some kids coming down from the high school to help out, we also have been in some talks with NJIT to help us with the, with the, with the event. So, NJIT's been great, they've offered us a few, what I think are great opportunities for our kids in coding and for other STEM areas, so we're going to continue to build that. Mr. Scow, the vice principal of Lakeview, is really spearheading that with Mrs. Costanza, the technology manager. Also, to the board, we have committees scheduled, normally we would do it next Tuesday, since it's the holiday, it's going to be a little tricky to get everything done, so I was looking to hopefully push it to December eighth, which is the second Tuesday, and because we don't have two meetings in a month, it doesn't impact the, the meeting schedule like that. I put it, I put it in this Friday's email, so you saw it, but if, if anybody had a problem or a question, let's just deal with it individually, maybe we'll have to adjust, we'll adjust it if we have to. That's it for my report.
Sam, do you have any other bombshells or changes to the lives that you want to add?
Well, as I mentioned at the beginning, Wednesday is the next pass meeting, and we're going to be going over the park score reports, how to interpret the student reports coming out. And they will be coming out to families before winter break.
Next Wednesday.
It's Wednesday, at River View, six-thirty.
So now the test scores are coming out, and before the winter break, so before the session.
Well, to parents, yes. I have. This concludes my report. All of my talking.
Thank you for putting that out, otherwise I would have waited for you to conclude.
We were waiting. To conclude this.
We all have no idea what to do.
Sorry.
Can I ask you a quick question? If I have a question to ask you, do I need to wait to the very end?
You can wait like another thirty-five seconds, probably. Damaris, you have anything for us?
I do, the information needed to complete the audit is finally available on the web, on the state website. The audit report is not finalized, because the auditor needs more time and information, therefore we'll be approving the paper in the morning.
Oh, good, thank you for that. Now it is, my goodness, nine forty-one, and we're going to open for public comment. Anything pertaining to the agenda?
Yes.
Close to the agenda?
Sort of, yes. Jennifer Presner, five women drive. I wanted to know if the park test dates were available for 2016.
We know the window, it depends on the grade level, what we're waiting for, and it should What we're waiting for, and it should be out the end of this week, is how many hours each grade level is, because we're told that it's about eight and a quarter hours, that just makes the difference if Monday to Thursday, Tuesday to Friday, but if you even catch me, email me, I can tell you, we know it's going to be third and eighth grades the week after spring break, not starting on Monday. So I'm not sure what to do back.
And just to be clear, we don't really have a choice, they tell us when they.
Well, there's a window, and then, but we have the, we get to choose the order, it has to be anytime during that order, we have, or during that month, but we're not starting until after spring break, we're not starting the Monday after spring break, and we're starting with third and eighth, and then fourth and seventh, and then fifth and sixth go together. So.
Is, will we do like third and eighth one week, fourth and seventh the following week, and fifth and sixth the following?
Yep, yes, I just don't know, what I'm waiting on is for them to tell me how many hours each grade level is, so that I can say it's going to be two days, three days, four, I don't know how many days. Like the middle school probably only be a couple of days, and then elementary will likely spread it out and just do like an hour a day, or two hours actually.
Okay. Thanks.
That was close.
Sorry, I don't think that did.
Any other?
It's on the website.
Any other comments to the public? From the public, I should say. All right, 9:43, so is that, all right, into the, into the actual agenda. Carlos, how many more do you got?
One more. One more after this.
Goodness. You'll be missed, I'm working at the whole speech, it's like a rose kind of scenario, they're going to come in, people you've wronged by changing their bus stops, you want to take it through old business?
Sure. So under old business, I'd like to move items A, B, and C as a block, as that includes the reports for October, educational reports, and the minutes from our last meeting.
Do you have a second on that?
I'll second. I'll second.
I thought you guys were going to rip them, but I didn't second it.
Sorry, I didn't mean to continue.
That was done like a true professional, six years, seven years?
Four and a half.
Four and a half.
No, I came in, I came in the tree for some.
That's true. Any questions about this? Questions? No? No? All right, roll call please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
Yes.
Mrs. DeLuna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes. All right, Dino, you want to take it to personnel?
Absolutely.
There's an agenda of.
Yeah, there is an agenda. Yes, I'd like to move under personnel, A, items one through four as a block, also to include from the addendum, item 1B, these are new hires and extra pay salary adjustments, and also two additional resolutions concerning personnel.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Questions about this area?
We included the.
Yeah, it's 1B.
1B, got it.
It's always nice to have a Lakeview student coming back as a teacher. It's 1B. Good, any, any other questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
Yes.
Mrs. DeLuna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes. All right, Michael, what do you got for us?
If there are no objections, I'd like to move B, 1, 2, and 3 as a block, there are some workshops with expenses, the always exciting list of field trip requests, and Computer Science Week, the 7th through the 13th, I think that was what you had talked about, right, Steve?
Right.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions about this area? Every year the kids come back, I ask them about it, they always say something cool about it.
Oh, wait, I have a question. Sorry.
Whoa, whoa, sorry.
Yes, no?
You can't do it right now, it's all right.
It's about number four, can I ask about that or no? Four, two, four?
Two, four.
Section four, number four. Four pages. Four.
Finance.
A little bit, about Britannian Theater Palace.
Oh, we just voted on that, right?
I, can you explain what that is?
Want to explain it?
Don't you have a motion?
Oh, yeah, well, let's do a motion.
Just vote on this other.
Okay.
So let's, roll call please on.
One to three as a block.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
Yes.
Mrs. DeLuna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes. All right, so your third question is typically free, so you got a good one here, so you want to answer.
So this is just students that are in graduate programs to get their principal certificates and things like that, they have to do an internship. It doesn't take them out of their class or anything like that, it's just they work on projects during the, during their time outside of their school hours.
So it does no impact on the school day?
No, not, doesn't take, doesn't take the teacher out of the classroom.
That's what I wanted to know. Okay.
The idea is to load them up with stuff, to help them.
Okay.
Barbara, go take us to the public?
Sure. Okay, I'd like to move just motion one, the items listed on the agenda, there are three for second reading and adoption, the petty cash, transportation, and by law executive authority. There's also a right for physical exams for first reading.
Do you have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Any questions in this area?
This has been much spoken about, regulation 8600, transportation.
Somebody wrote you down that.
Yeah, it was right on the tip of your tongue.
I think it was when you answered that question.
Which, I don't remember even what changed it after we talked about the past students.
Something about the types of students, for the bus drivers, right, to pick up students?
I don't know.
Oh, that's, it was something like that. Any questions? Okay, now, roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Obstain.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Du, Mr. Duarte?
Yes.
Mrs. DeLuna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
All right, Barbara, can we find you? Now you're troubled.
So power off.
Had to go with a bang.
I'd like to make a motion to move as a block, items under finance, section D, numbers one through eight as listed on the agenda, this includes flex spending, discovery benefits for the flex spending program, the roster of doctors and evaluators, speech therapy consultant for observations, though the report recovered in the transportation meeting, the sector consultant helping us with some of these tough decisions, the patency. The contract with Rockaway Township District, additional $4,250 for the cost of aid for student ID to a $2,6700, the list of budget transfers for October, the checklist that were sent to us, and the item aid, the donation that we saw earlier this evening, mock trial.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
To be noted, I think we talked about earlier, the generous donation by Einhorn Harris, which they always do, I mean joking aside, they saved the program originally when it was lost to the budget restructuring six years ago or so, and they've always come through, three good guys. Any questions? Don, you said it, right?
Yes.
Roll call.
Just getting the pen ready to take the roll.
That's it, it's yes, we.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes, but on motion seven, I need to abstain on check number 66509.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
Yes to everything, no on check 1138, the number seven.
The milky stage, you know.
You'd really something else.
Just like parents, right, you don't want to dictate what goes on in the home, don't dictate what my kids.
You want to figure kids half and half, it's your own choice.
Or if I want to give them whole milk, because Jonathan is 75 pounds and he's in seventh grade, I should be able.
That's your own choice.
Mrs. DeLuna?
Yes.
Napoloni?
Yes. Thank you.
Very good, transportation.
Sure, on a less stressful note, I'd like us to approve all the evacuation girls as listed on the agenda. Second.
Laura, questions about this area? Roll call please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Duarte?
Yes.
Mrs. DeLuna?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes. All right, good at cause, any committee reports? It was a committee, right? Wasn't there?
No. Not since our last meeting, we had a meeting, discussed an out briefing, I can spell.
Oh, you're right, it was a mini committee.
Yeah, we're going to fold, we're talking about that.
Yeah, I didn't get my report for it out.
All right, so we'll get that, so, all right, anything else, discussion items, school volunteers, do we keep going down this road?
I'm not sure, I left it on, it keeps anybody else who wants to talk about this though.
Anything about the volunteers?
No.
No? Board office, this is sort of, we'll have to wait till the next, I guess, meeting, right?
It should be done in the next meeting.
Hopefully. Trailers, sort of conversation, strategic planning, anything else about strategic planning?
I'm going to remove that one, if there's no objections, we're done talking about it, I believe.
Okay. Two-tier busing, we haven't spoken about this one. Two-tier busing, that's a lot on that one too, now. You know, funny enough, there's so many people who were talking about how simple it would be to eliminate stops, we have so many redundant bus stops and empty buses, I promise you, if we said one word about changing one more bus stop, it'd be flooded with as many people or more. Am I wrong? Any other other?
I actually do have one thing, so I picked up my nephews off the bus today, first time I've ever picked them up on their specific route, and the bus driver pulled me aside and said, who are you? So kudos to him, because that's exactly what they should do, is find out who they are.
You are a little scary.
Yeah, exactly. It's like on the beard, everybody's questioning.
You're very questionable.
If I first, we actually would have been called, police.
That's what he did right after. No, but he did his job, and it was kudos to him because he, I mean, he literally gave me the finger, pulled me over, so it was good, it was totally a genuine thing, and kudos to the bus drivers for doing that.
Just for clarity, in case they couldn't see, that finger was the index finger.
They come hit it, they come hit it.
It was the common hitter finger.
Not the other.
Thank you for clarifying.
We're going to open up for public comments again.
Wait, wait, I have one.
You got another other?
I have one other other, just one more plug for the pass that Dr. Carlos brought up. At the la, I attended the Lakeview PTA meeting where I did talk to them about busing and encouraged them to come out, but they actually rescheduled their PTA meeting off your pass meeting, I don't turn on their meeting, just so parents would have the opportunity to attend both.
That's a second.
It's a second. Busing and park, in one.
Bring it to the.
We're going to talk about busing and the pass.
No, but I need to do this all one week.
9:55, we can open up for public comments, anything, yeah? We got one.
Anything to the district?
Something about our snappy comments.
Kevin Scollins, 12 Magnolia Avenue, Denble. Busing, a great discussion. This board has definitely recommended on how this meeting was handled and how you reached out to the public in such a positive way, with what I consider positive results. Kudos to you. The Morristown Daily Record had a great article in the paper, maybe a few, three or four days ago probably, in reference to St. Clair's hospital, and it indicated that there will be over a million dollars in tax revenue to the municipality as a result of St. Clair's going basically public and for profit. A large portion of this revenue will go to the two school districts, and of course, K to 12 being one of them. My question to this board is, what do you intend to do, I'm assuming you're aware of this transaction, and my question is to you, what do you plan to do with this new fund revenue?
So, I'll take part of it, we can talk on whatever we want. So, Mr. Collins, thanks for the question, I think any fund revenue, unfortunately, considering how many millions of dollars that this district has in terms of future repairs, is, I hate to say it this way, but is almost already spent in a lot of different ways. I think by last count, the district had something in the neighborhood of $10 million, $12 million?
If you, if you have everything, roofs alone, we're looking at a $2.5 million liability over the next few years.
Right, so I say that because as much as the district, I think, has been fiscally conservative over years now, certainly over my time and beforehand, in many cases, there has been deficiency in being able to prioritize capital dollars towards capital improvements. We're not at the budgeting point, I can't tell you what sort of impact that may or may not have on the local taxpayer, I think it would be irresponsible of any of us being able to say that yet. What I can tell you, though, is that the district is already working at a deficit when it comes to a lot of the expenses that it has on a reoccurring annual basis, like salaries and benefits and things like that, and then we tack on the idea that the district has, like I said, capital liabilities into the millions, the impact will be much, much, much helping, be a great help to the district, but, you know, we're still in a position where those dollars still need to, we need to be able to prioritize where those dollars are going to go, and a lot of times it's going to go for capital improvements. So, without answering your question, trying to answer your question, I think the board has a lot of thinking to do when it comes to that, but I can tell you, there's a lot of things already on the table that probably need to be spent on.
And I thank you for, I thank you for that information that you presented, yeah, and I think it's important, and I think everybody knows how important it is, that we do everything that we can do to reduce taxes, and since, since our two school, basically, districts are the biggest draw on taxes, I think it's important that the public become aware of what the intent for that new revenue would be.
Yeah, and I'll assure you that, as is with every single year that we go through our budget process, there are public meetings where we discuss the proposed budget, the revised budget, the presented budget, and all sorts of different meetings where we try to go through a lot of that, and line by line, item by item, dollar by dollar, it's presented, so we'll continue to do that.
I know you guys do a great job, I'm sure you will continue to do so, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to add too, is that, you know, we, we're not even at the point of even talking about it, I mean, we've seen, we've all seen it in the newspaper, that's about as far as we've gotten with even understanding, it hasn't been a conversation in a committee at all, it is way, way too early to have those conversations, but we're, we do, like Dave said, we do have tremendous liabilities that we are all thinking about long-term, how we need to finance these liabilities and coming up with ideas, and, you know, we've been, the board, prior to me getting on the board, has been very fiscally conservative, the fact that we have so much in capital reserves, the fact that we've got a fairly low debt, and the debt is actually coming up fairly soon, all those things are positive, and any additional revenue in would certainly help to mitigate how much we would look to potentially ask for additional money from the town and therefore the taxpayers, so it's, it's a positive to have, you know, positive revenue without, you know, any, any potential negative consequences or, you know, additional debt being floated, so I know I'm excited about it as a, as a one of seven up here, in the fact that it's, it's kind of found money, and I will promise you that we will be very careful in how we spend every every single dollar of anything we get, like we do all the time. But we're so early in that process that I don't think it's even come across any of our desks to understand what the number would, would be, and, and just outside of what the Daily Record, which I, I like to read, but not what I use for figuring out our budget, but also just understanding where we would need it too, so, but.
Thank you, Mike, for that. What to do? Sorry.
As Mr. Anderson stated, it's way too early. I did contact the municipality, the town hall, and I spoke to Mrs. Klein. As she mentioned, again, it's way too early to determine the amount that the district will receive. She will have a better number, a better idea around January, February, when they are able to put the revenues together.
And I do realize all of that, but just keep in mind that the Morristown Daily Record did depict in detail how the money was going to be allocated, and the amounts that was going to be allocated, as stated by the town administrator. That, that's already public. So, knowing that, I think it'll be very, very important that we're totally transparent with basically how that money and where that money is going to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Collins.
Yes, sir.
Give us your name and your address with the record.
Good evening. Chris Skolinski, 41 Warren Trail, Denble, New Jersey. Thanks for your service. Can you, a lot of talk about transportation tonight. Can you please tell us a little bit more about the contract with transportation sector consultants for GPS service and other transportation services? What are some of those other transportation services?
Can you talk a little bit about bussing? Do you wanna go through some of that?
Sure. Transportation service consultant, they, they're our consultant for transportation. They also provide us with our GPS.